So then our first order of business is recommended actions, the appointment of the Tooten Hills principal.
All right, I have the pleasure of getting to talk a little bit tonight and introducing this motion to the board. So I am really excited to put before the board tonight the nomination for Anjanet Belmonte to be the next principal of Tooten Hills Elementary School. We have Scott Baker with us tonight, too. Thank you, Scott, for joining us. He's been a wonderful mentor to Anjanet over the past years. But Anjanet has been an incredibly successful teacher, instructional coach for us, and a valued member of our Administrative Council for the past five years. So this was really quite a process. You know, we started with over 40 candidates, a very experienced pool that Central Office had a chance to screen and do a round of interviews with, and then really two rigorous rounds that in each of those, Anjanet really came to the forefront as somebody that demonstrates her ability to connect, shape of vision, and really demonstrate her instructional expertise. You know, when you interview as an internal candidate, there are both advantages to that, and there are disadvantages to that. But what came out very strongly in all the debriefs that Anjanet's reputation roots her, people know the quality of her work, the impact she has had in this district, and are really excited to move forward and work with her. And I think that speaks volumes of what Ange has done over the years. So I can't be more excited to have Anjanet join our team. You know, she is replacing a dynamic leader, and we're doing some restructures in this district that I think our team is really excited about, and Anjanet's going to be a very important part of that. So with that, I would ask the board to consider the motion.
All right, now, I'm going to ask if somebody would like to make the motion appointing Anjanet Belmonte to-
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to, for Anjanet Belmonte to be the principal at Tooten Hills Elementary School.
You're on mute, Susan. You're on mute.
Yeah, the effective date, Matt, do you have that?
Yes, effective February 16th. She will start at Tooten Hills.
Effective February 16th.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
For the honor, I will second that motion of Anjanet Belmonte to be the next principal of Tooten Hills School. And is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Anjanet. I'm so excited for you to join the team in this new way, and want to give you a chance to say something.
Thank you guys so much. I really want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity that lies ahead. And honestly, over the past 14 years, the district and Henry James has just given me the opportunities to grow and become the leader that I really feel that I am. I'm going to miss Henry James with all of my heart and soul, and it's going to be really hard to leave them without getting all of the hugs that we're going to need to exchange with one another. But I am so excited and so ready to join the Tooten Hills community and learn about our families and our students and the amazing staff there. These next three weeks are just going to be the most exciting time for me as I transition in. And I do just want to say, I am certainly an emotional person who just banks on relationships. And what has been the most amazing part of this all is that this year I have lost both of my grandparents, who are my biggest fans and always said to me, you know, you're going to be a principal one day. And I just know now that they're both here with me and smiling down on me and are just incredibly proud. So I thank you guys very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're so excited for that.
Thank you. Me, too.
Sorry, my unmute is not working as well as I'd like. All right, so now we have, are moving on to the approval of the minutes of the January 12, 2021 meeting.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
A minute.
Can I get a second, please? I'll second. Okay, all the, any discussion, changes? All those in favor, say aye, please, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of minutes of January 19 special meeting. Can I get a motion now, please?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
A second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your hand? All right, and then moving on to personnel.
Okay, as you can see, our one item tonight is about Melissa Leonard, who is a highly skilled and highly energetic math teacher at Simsbury High School. It's making me feel old that I hired her eight years ago when I was the principal at Simsbury High School. And I want to congratulate Melissa on the birth of her first child, who, her son arrived just before Christmas and was home in time for, for the holidays. So as Melissa's maternity leave is ending here, she has put in a request for a guaranteed non-salaried leave of absence for the remainder of this school year with the intention of resuming her full-time employment when we start the next school year. So the motion with the proper dates is there on the slide, and that's the item we need to move tonight.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approved the request for non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Melissa Leonard, effective January 27, 2021 through June 30, 2021.
And a second?
Karen, I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now the approval of the Joan Sullivan Memorial Scholarship.
Terrific. That's over to me. I'm so excited to be able to present to the board for your consideration, a new scholarship being brought forth by the family of Joan Sullivan to honor her legacy as a long-term coach and teacher at Simsbury High School. Ms. Sullivan began at Simsbury High School in 1954, and she was a force to be reckoned with for 37 years until she retired in 1991. In addition to teaching, she coached almost every single sport available to female athletes in that era: badminton, basketball, field hockey, softball, tennis, volleyball. And she received countless awards and accolades both on the local and state level. So this is one scholarship in the amount of $1,000 awarded to a graduating senior of this class, 2021, and the criteria include a female student who excels in athletics and in academics. So there is a motion for your consideration this evening.
Great. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Sure, I can do it. I'll move that the Board of Education approved the Joan Sullivan Memorial Scholarship dispersed in 2021.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? With the thanks of the board to the Sullivan family, we're so happy to receive this, and I'm sure it will go to a wonderful graduating senior. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. And then approval of the Latimer Lane PTO donation.
That's to me again. So in keeping with your board policy, the Board of Education needs to approve any gifts to the school system that exceed $1,500. And this evening, we are requesting your approval of a gift from the Latimer Lane PTO in the amount of $10,910. And the gift is to purchase and install a Miracle Gravity Diamond. So it is quite a structure, one that I want to try out once it's been installed and has reached all the inspections, but it's quite an element. It's going to be used by all students, grades K through six. And the PTO funded this purchase through their Run Back to School 5K. And certainly, they had to do that a little bit differently this year. It's in its seventh year, the Back to School Run. They did so virtually, and families would log their courses and miles virtually. So very exciting. But all of those fundraised is used for this purchase. So there's a motion there for your consideration.
Terrific. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll motion.
Okay, and can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
Did we get a motion?
I was gonna say, I didn't even get, I didn't read it. I just-
We, I think we can take that. If you want to read it, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the proposed gift of $10,910 from the Latimer Lane School PTO be approved.
All right, Jen seconded, and-
I will still second it.
There we go. I'm sorry, moving along quicker than I expected. Point of order, point of order on this, it's, I'm reading it. The administration is requesting Board of Ed approval of a gift to Latimer Lane School from its PTO. And the motion to move, move that the proposed gift of $10,900 from the Central School PTO, is there any- Matt, that was corrected if you look at this slide.
It's on the screen.
Of course it was. I knew that. Checking to make sure you all knew that.
Gag, say Latimer.
Can we get a vote on this motion now? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Motion carries. With the thanks of the board, our PTOs have been such a great resource for us, and Latimer Lane's no exception. So what a wonderful way to use their 5K money. Thank you so much. All right, so now I need to amend the agenda. So I'm going to need a motion. Next up would have been the Latimer Lane Character, Community and Connection Presentation. As we are not at Latimer Lane due to the snowstorm, we'd like to put this off until we can actually be at Latimer Lane among the community to see the presentation. So I'd like a motion to postpone this agenda item until we are at Latimer Lane.
I'll make that motion.
And can I get a second?
I'll second again.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So now we will move on to the 2122 Budget Enrollment and Staffing Presentation.
Great. Neil's going to walk us through this, Susan and the board tonight. And this is a, this is a big piece, as you know, historically in setting the stage for our budget, as you know, the personnel costs coupled with the benefits represent almost 80% of our overall operating budget. So Neil's going to walk us through really a detailed explanation of enrollment as it relates to staffing and various other factors that will lead to the budget development process and lead into some further conversation at our workshop in a couple of weeks. So Neil, go, go right ahead. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody. I now hope this goes a little more smoothly than your motions for the Latimer Lane gift, but I think, I think I can get there. So it's always, I always look forward to this night because it's, it's an opportunity. At the heart of the work that I do in a people business is the human resources work and the chance to kick off our budget process by talking about the major personnel drivers that are facing the board for this coming year. It is always a great opportunity. So the presentation is organized in such a way that we're going to look at some historical enrollment and staffing data, and then we'll break down the themes by level at the elementary, middle, and high school, followed by some district positions and priorities. I've set up the presentation this year to be a bit more narrative when we get to talking about the positions until the very end, when you'll see sort of the fiscal impact. So instead of layering the dollars all the way through the presentation, you'll see where we stand in terms of budget impact at the very end. So with that said, we'll start with the district context in terms of the historical enrollment patterns that we've seen. And so I will frame the presentation by saying this is data we have been using for the last few years, and I want to explain to both the board and the public why we choose 2008, '09, and 2012, '13 as good historical markers to compare to current. 2008, '09 represented the height of the last 20 years of enrollment in the Simsbury Public Schools when we were at just 4,900, just over 4,900 students. And then we chose 12, '13 because it's sort of halfway, a rough halfway point when there were 4,500 students in the school district. And then we give you the, the next several years. So you'll see that pattern repeat itself on, on many of the slides. What, what this one demonstrates is that over time, the, the enrollment has declined, although you'll see in other slides that, and this one, that over the last few years, it's really steadied. So after that decade of pretty sharp decline, experienced most profoundly at the K6 level during that time with a decrease of about 426 students, and then about 200 at the middle school, and 250 at the high school. And the board, at least, is very familiar with how this pattern has played itself out over the past decade or so as we've built budgets. In addition to enrollment, we want to look at staffing, which is the next slide on here. And again, we, we chose those other markers, but you can see from last, from the 1920 school year to the current 2021 school year, we did experience staffing increases, and those, for the most part, can be directly attributed to COVID-related expenses on both the certified and the, the non-certified side. What we do try to show is that as enrollment declined over time, we were able to achieve reductions in positions, you know, not at the same pace that enrollment was declining, but I think we were very responsible in the way that, that we, we were managed, we managed our budgets as, as enrollment declined. I will point you, just because it's a theme that comes up later in the presentation. If you look at the certified column between the 12, '13 year and the 2021 school year, you'll note a, a decline that was very profound up through last year of 18 positions, and then COVID-related positions were added back in this year. So we've achieved a lot of savings on the certified side. Where we've been less successful is on the non-certified side in terms of reductions, even though enrollment has decreased during that time. So that's something we'll come back to later in the presentation, and I wanted to make sure I noted it as we went through here. And on the bottom, you can see that we have had an increase over the last few years, most of which comes in, in this year due to those, hopefully, one-time expenses. I always like to show the board some of what you've supported in your most recent budgets. These are only some of the things, but they are highlights of what you have been able to accomplish through your budget process in, in terms of taking the savings that we've realized in our reductions and putting it back to good use in terms of expanding elementary world language, adding a, an array of instructional coaches for our math program that was implemented, getting more math support, and then last year, adding that capstone coordinator position. And I know you had a, a presentation from Liz McKay in the fall that showed you that that position is already up and running and doing some great work. On the special education side, a significant increase in social workers at both the elementary and high school level, stepped up support in preschool and at not only the high school in Latimer Lane, but other places where we've added teachers and a number of paraeducators to support the program and special services. So we're on to our look at the elementary level. We have four slides related to the elementary program tonight. The first one is here, trying to compare the historical just K6 enrollment with how many classroom teachers. That number on the right represents what you may refer to as homeroom teachers at the, at the elementary level. So it does not include the music teachers, the PE teachers, the art teachers, and other specialists. This is truly the classroom teachers. At its height, in 2008, '09, you can see it was at 109 and a half. And then, even though there was a significant enrollment decrease, the numbers stayed about the same for a while, and that, the members who have been on the board a long time will remember that that was when we instituted full-day kindergarten. And so therefore, we, we were not yet experiencing the efficiencies, but then quickly did experience efficiencies over the next few years, and you saw a reduction of 12 positions. I want to point you to the bottom three lines on this. So when, when we were at this point last year, we budgeted for 102 positions at the elementary level for 2,095 students. It was two positions more than the year before, but it, it was, had we been in normal circumstances, it was going to be very accurate forecasting. In fact, because of everything we needed to do to respond to COVID, we would describe ourselves right now of how we're actually living, is that it's required 123 teachers in classrooms to, to teach our K through six students. And at the bottom, you'll see that I broke that out for you, that it's 104 in-person classes. We added a few because of reducing class sizes for COVID safety reasons. And then we also built the distance learning classrooms, 19 in all. So, and when you look at the blue line as, at the bottom of what we're projecting now, 2,081 students, and believe it or not, it comes right back to exactly 102 classrooms that would be needed if we went back to normal Board of Ed class size guidelines. So all of this is, you know, presuming that we're budgeting in a normal period. And I'm going to emphasize that what the comparison is, budget to budget, is actually flat. It's somewhere in between how we're actually living this year, that is, you know, a, a part of how you really need to think about this budget and what I think we need to be able to communicate to the Board of Finance. I think the next slide demonstrates that by showing what we did last summer. So I say that to say that the goal for this coming year at the elementary level is really to rebuild intervention and support systems that we put in place over many years that, quite frankly, were sacrificed in order to staff the schools during the pandemic. In, in terms of how many different teacher leaders were moved to classroom positions, you could see that we repurposed over 16 positions just in the summer of 2020 to get our schools open for COVID, from math coaches and language arts consultants to our reading intervention programs and one library media specialist. In addition, we added five unbudgeted positions in the summer in order to reduce class sizes for COVID safety. So one of the .6 positions in that repurpose actually went to special education. So in terms of classroom teachers, it's the 16 and the five for 21 additional teachers, and that's sort of how you got from 102 budgeted to the 123 that we opened school with. So I think it's important that we tell the narrative that this was really hard work to do this, but that it is now time, once we get vaccinations and hopefully back to a sense of normalcy, that we have to rebuild what, what we have proudly created over the last several years in Simsbury. In, in terms of what that looks like, I could show you the staffing on the next slide. If you took what is actually in the schools right now, one Tariffill teacher, we actually shut down a first grade classroom right before school opened and converted that teacher to a distance learning teacher, we would imagine adding that position back in. We added classrooms at Latimer and Central in order to deal with class sizes that were above 18, where we couldn't create proper social distancing. So in a world where we could put eight, more than 18 students back, we would, we would repurpose those positions back. And then we imagine having all students in person and not, not having to create a separate distance learning school as an opportunity. As I highlighted in my previous presentation on enrollment, we're really going to have to pay attention to kindergarten and first grade because those are our least predictable grades, and the very small kindergarten yield that we had this year could sort of, parents can choose to bring their students back, and it could break either way, whether we need to change a section of first grade to kindergarten or perhaps kindergarten to first grade. So that's something I'll be monitoring very closely and reporting to the board in late spring. I do want to emphasize that this rebuild of intervention and support systems is going to require very close collaboration between the Human Resources Department and principals, working through seniority, the schools that people came from, can they go back to their original position? It's our hope that almost everybody will be able to do that. And that's, but that's going to take a lot of work to, to move the pieces back that we moved last summer. And, and a big unknown out there is whether or not the state is going to require districts to continue to offer distance learning in, in the fall. There's not really any talk yet about whether that will be a requirement, and I don't expect that there will be till at least spring or summer as people start to figure out where we're at. But again, the highlight is at the bottom of this slide in the center, that at the elementary level, it's to understand that the budget to budget impact represents flat staffing. One more slide, and then I'll pause to see if there are any questions about elementary. We did have a few other requests from principals. I will note, we, we returned to a program that had been popular many years ago, where we named building substitutes, which is sort of, the first substitute in the, in each building is a person who reports to that building every day and is used in that building every day. We did it for COVID safety reasons, but it has a lot of cultural benefits that a principal and the secretaries and the staff know that there's going to be a consistent substitute who gets to know all the kids in that school over the course of the year. We pay those substitutes a little bit more and, and have a little bit of benefit for them. And we pay for that out of a substitute account that is a different line item of personnel than the typical salary account. So it is accounted for in there. We had some requests for principals anticipating the need for more math tutorial support. These schools in particular may need budget support because the other two schools, Latimer and Tariffill, are Title I schools. the other two schools, Latimer and Terrifill, are Title I schools and are able to support some tutorial hours through grant funding. This is not a major cost, but we do believe that in terms of achievement gaps and returning from the pandemic, that this is going to be a need. These other requests at the bottom, right now, we are holding on these, not placing them into the budget to be supported. There was a request at Squadron Line to look at special education staffing. We want to wait until the spring to see whether that comes to fruition in terms of a need. And both Sue and our new Director of Special Services will be looking very closely at that. As I said, when I pointed to your accomplishments in the budget, we have added a number of social workers. And when you give principals a good resource, they want more of a good resource. So at Terrifill and Latimer, the principals have actually advocated for making social workers full time in their buildings. We understand the desire for that. At this time, supporting another full position would be challenging. And we want to wait to see when we get kids back into the building, whether that's something we can support in the future. And then there was just one non-certified position that was that's currently not been filled during the pandemic, that was put in as a request. And that's right now, something we might be looking for as a responsible reduction. So I can pause there for a moment. That's the elementary look and see if anybody has any questions on that piece.
I do. Neil, I have a couple of questions. So so one, I'm going to start from on the social worker. On the social worker question, is it, do you guys view social work different than how we would use mental health positions?
Well, I think I think the social workers are all within the the mental health supports that we have. In addition, we have school psychologists in every building. For me, this is a little bit of a staffing issue in terms of, you know, it would it would be great to have a full time social worker at Terrifill, but population wise, that would be as much social work as we have at Terrifill as we have at Squadron. And, you know, to me, we have to be able to make sense of that and articulate that need. I don't know if Sue would want to add anything to that question in terms of the mental health supports.
Right. Because what I was really getting at is, you know, is it want versus need? Is it something that's driving the need for the ask, you know, versus, that's why I'm getting, you know? Because it there's a difference, you know?
Yep. Sue, go ahead.
So Sharon, are you asking, is there more mental health issues that's driving? That's what you're asking, right? So I do believe that right now, we are very well-staffed to respond to those mental health needs. I think we just overall, we continue to see the value of what our social workers bring to the table. But if I thought we were compromised in that area, you might be hearing a stronger sentiment. And I think it's what we continue to take a look at, in addition to our school psychologist, our other behavior support, our paraeducator staff, our special ed teachers, so and our school counselors as well.
And it was because of the two schools that it was. And then the second, the other question that I had, Neil, was was more around, and this is kind of a general question, you know, we're in this budget cycle. And one of the things that I've been wondering about, and this is from the state and just in general, is, you know, we're, we're in this COVID situation and we're in budget time. And, you know, have we had and have we heard, you know, anything? And you've just kind of inferred, you know, have we heard anything around what should stay versus what should go? Because I would think that could impact our budget, right? And we're making decisions right now. And to your point, you know, we don't know whether or not we might need to add other things because the state may come down and say, there's something else we might need to make more permanent as a result of, you know, things that they find that we should keep.
Yeah. Can I take a swing at that one, Neil? That's, I think that's a great, that's a great point and a great frame of reference. And I think what Neil's trying to show is what exactly you grabbed onto, Sharon, right? This influx period that we're in, which is so different than the budget that we were to live under. So a lot of conversations with superintendents strategically about how to present budgets this year, in creating back, you know, the goal that Neil stated is one we've talked a lot about. We need to ensure that the things we've repurposed are solely in place because those would be the areas normally under tough budget years, we would go to look to reduce, right? And we're not going to be able to do that. The second piece is, we received some word today, Sharon, that may provide some relief on that front in the future, that districts are going to receive more SRA funding. We should find out in the next couple of weeks, the word on that, that it will be, much like those that were around back when we had the the ERA funding, a two-year kind of option to spend the spend the funding and address in certain categories that are related to issues that arose during COVID. For example, Sharon, if we got into the summer, got into the fall, and we realized, hey, reengage in some of these students and some of these families is is more difficult than we are staffed to do in a social worker sense, we may have a funding option that we can tag as COVID-related in a category with the new SRA funding, rather than try to anticipate all that before we get the kids back and look. So I think we're going to have a little wiggle on the back end that the board and administration here are going to have to categorize as we work through, once we know what those dollars look like. And that will be, I think that'll help us to navigate what you brought up, which is very tricky, because they're not going to give us guidance, I believe, on some of these things until very late in the game, unfortunately.
Okay.
So for us, it almost makes sense to have like a COVID reserve line for things that we may have to carry over to next year.
I don't know that it's a reserve line. I think they're ideas like Neil said, that these are things we're thinking about in our planning to try to be ready. And we're not necessarily going to put them in current year operating, but we're going to be poised to talk about them in the future when we get we get started again.
Okay.
But once we have those dollars, we can quantify it much more effectively than I'm able to tonight.
Okay, thanks.
And going back to what you had mentioned, Matt, it's a long, it's a long session this year. So chances are, Education Committee and others there will be holding back as long as they possibly can. You're not going to see a lot of these things come forward very quickly because they too are in limbo of what the next landscape is going to be for the following year. So there's, there's really no magic wand to say that this will be coming down the pike or this won't be. But just, just in case, you know, it most likely will be stretched out until session ends, that any kind of, you know, forthcoming decisions for districts would be made.
So just a reminder to those who are watching who might not be familiar, the long session doesn't end until, is it June?
June, yes. We end, yes. So it's a long session.
So the legislative session could go a long way before we really have these answers.
Absolutely. I mean, in an ideal world, you'd love to get some something beforehand, but chances are with what is, you know, what issues are coming down the pike this year before the legislature, or aren't too many, but some, some areas, some issues, some concerns may be brought back that were brought to the table last year before pre-COVID, but may be coming back again.
Anybody else have questions on the elementary staffing?
All right, let's forge ahead to the secondary. We'll look at Henry James first. And again, you can see those historical markers. And then something I'm sure I've never seen before, that the 633 students last year, 633 students this year, and 633 students projected for next year. Never seen a number stay that steady in terms of enrollment. You could see that last year, we had 58.86 certified faculty. We did have a little bit of an ad over the summer for some COVID safety reasons in PE and health. But the board will also remember that this was something that Scott Baker and Angelina Belmonte had requested as a way to enhance PE and health so that kids could get it every day in seventh and eighth grade. And we actually accomplished it. It was, it was a combination of safety reasons, being able to keep kids on their team, but also to keep them out of study hall and enhance the curriculum. So it's a slight add, but it paid a big dividend. And you're going to see that we recommend keeping it. Moving on to the class sizes, this is a slide I always show the board to say, based on the projections, what do we think, are we, are we going to be able to live within class size guidelines? And what you do is take the overall projected enrollment divided by the number of teams you're going to have. And Scott is recommending to stick with the structure of 2.8 teams in each grade. And then once you get the team size divide by five, to get what an average class size would be. And there you can see that we are within Board of Ed guidelines of 21 to 25 in both grades. That 322 in seventh grade is a projection based on the 315 kids currently in grade six. And as I've noted before to the board, it's when we're doing this at budget time next year, we're going to have that very small grade that's an anomaly with only 267 kids currently in it that is entering the middle school. So we will have to make a budget adjustment next year, or at least a staffing adjustment when we face that class. At the, I think the next slide is high school staff. It is?
Can I just stop for a second?
Sure.
Can I just go back just to maybe, can you just remind folks, how do you get the 0.8 of a team?
Yeah. So you have a team that is reduced, it's smaller, it doesn't have 115 students, it has 80% of that number of students. And the teachers on that team, the way it ends up working is that we, they have a, they either teach a full load on two different teams, or this is a team where many of our department supervisors who have a reduced load teach. So it, it is just a trick of middle school scheduling. They would love to always have full teams, but in terms of the budget impact of always rounding up to a full team, it would have a significant impact.
Yeah, thanks. I just thought it was worth a reminder. Appreciate it.
So in the high school staffing, I really want to point to the historical savings that have come at the high school from when we were at the height of enrollment and staffing to where we are today. And you can see it's very significant that this is where we've been making reductions over the past decade. We've continued to go to the well with the high school and and find staffing reductions since 2012, 13. In that period of time, over 15 positions that have come from high school staffing. I think it's been responsible. Our class sizes have stayed appropriate, but now that enrollment decline has stopped. As you can see, the current 1309 is projected to be 1306 for next year. So for the first time in a long time, we're also projecting flat staffing here at Simsbury High. We can go on to the next one, Katie, to talk about secondary staffing. At Henry James, it's very simple. It's really just looking to maintain that minor PE and health enhancement that got put in place during this coming year. We wanted to support it in the budget in last spring. We left it out. And then when COVID came, we were required to put it in. So it's just keeping kind of a good thing that got added. Scott, Scott and our new Assistant Principal also want to commit to keeping some things that they did with team scheduling. You'll recall that it's not just the core subjects anymore that are delivered on team. They're also delivering music and unified arts and PE and health on team. And that's something they would really like to continue post COVID. But because of that very, very flat enrollment, it really minimizes the middle school budget story for this year. At the high school, in terms of operating budget impact, we are, the enhancements to the curriculum come in a few areas where courses, new courses have been proposed. So I think the curriculum committee has talked a little bit about computer science, creating one more elective course to create a full four-year sequence for students interested in that strand of study. I know Aaron Murray presented to the board about the African-American and Latino studies elective that will go into place. There, there, we're just going to start to feel the impact of a change in the state requirement. Students will have to graduate, the, the current sophomores will have to graduate with two PE and health credits, whereas the previous standard had been 1.5 credits. So we'll see an impact on that. And of course, we are going to start to roll out some capstone eligible course offerings. We, we believe that we can do that with existing staffing. It's just taking what you get for a particular department in terms of a number of sections and assigning them so that you're accounting for these new courses. And I'm quite confident, working with Assistant Principal Campera, that we can make that happen. One place that we are going to have to pay attention to that was unanticipated, and Steve Petrino talked about it a lot in his budget presentation, is the fact that the high school's feeling the biggest pinch in terms of students struggling with distance learning. It's not surprising because we have remained in the hybrid. Kids spend less time at the high school in in-person learning than they do K eight. So they are looking very creatively and very hard at some credit recovery options that may be necessary for students who have struggled in this format. And it's going to require a commitment beyond our, our summer school offerings by DCE in terms of remediation and credit recovery have become very, very small. And we anticipate that that's going to have to be a larger ask for next summer and probably be supported with some operating budget dollars. We were starting to work up estimates on that. We think it's probably in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000 to pay some summer wages for teachers and, you know, but it could be upwards of that. And those programs are just taking shape. But it's really something I wanted to mention tonight because there is going to be a budget impact.
So Neil, I have a question on that. So, so is this just as a result of COVID? Or not so much the budget impact in that part, but the remediation and the credit recovery part, is that something that you would normally have offered?
On a, on a very small scale. We, we offer that on a, you know, we're fortunate at Simsbury High School that most students take their courses, pass their courses, proceed to graduation in an on-time manner. And we know that there are likely to be some students that fall behind the pace of graduation, really due to the challenges that that have been experienced with hybrid learning, where you're, where you don't go to school every day. And the high school administration is paying a lot of attention to those students. It's not a Simsbury trend. This is something that's being talked about in high schools across the country, that student achievement is suffering during the pandemic.
Right. So that's, that's kind of where I was getting ready to go is because it, it has been talked about, you know, and not just at the high school level, it's been talked about even, you know, in other levels. So my question was really going to be is, are we just looking at doing this for just high school? You know, are we thinking about doing it for middle school as well?
We, we do have some, again, small remediation programs at the middle school level in normal summers. And that is certainly a conversation I can pursue with Scott to see if that's something we need to expand. But I will point out that right now, all of our middle school students who choose to of our middle school students who choose to attend in-person learning attend. They aren't in a hybrid.
Right. No, no, no. And I understand that. I was just saying because of just because, and it's not just because of, I'm not thinking this is just a distance learning thing. I'm just thinking with those kids who may be getting behind as a catch-up, because that's the national discussion. You know, there's those that have been struggling and there's that catch-up period for the summer. That, so that's what I was getting at.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, just in terms of the, I think, I think this presentation is a statement that we are definitely feeling it most acutely at the high school level.
For distance learning.
Your point is very well taken.
Yeah.
Neil, I got a quick question on the high school enrollment numbers. You mentioned that this is, the high school is really where we've kind of gone to the well over the last few years in terms of a staff reduction. How do we, how does Simsbury, and I don't know if you have this, these numbers, but how do we stack up to other districts in terms of like, I don't know, do we have like a student, student to faculty ratio? Like I did some quick math and it looks like it's 11 something-ish to one, 12 to one. How are we compared to other districts that way?
Yeah, I, I have some of that data. I don't think I can quote it to you without some preparation. But the way that the state often looks at that is they ask you to look at average class sizes in some key courses. They ask you to look at like freshman English, biology, US history, and then you can compare district class sizes. But there's also a metric on just raw staff compared to population. And I could certainly pull some comparisons together. You know, maybe I can get it done by the time the budget workshop happens. But I, I'm happy to do that.
I didn't, I didn't know if high schools do that. I mean, like looking at colleges, like for my son, like that's something we look at, like, oh, what's the student to faculty ratio? I didn't know if that was something that we track at a high school level.
It's, it's available in some state reporting. And we, we've made some comparisons over time.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions for Neil?
All right. Last piece here of news is the district look. And the first thing on this slide is obviously something this board has talked a lot about of, you know, creating a dedicated position for our equity work. In this case, by title, potential, a Director of Equity and Access, which would be a newly budgeted position, a person who can focus without other things on the plate on professional development, curriculum review, and staff and student engagement related to equity and diversity issues. And obviously, the board has asked for this because it aligns with district priorities in your strategic plan. We have worked up a, a draft of a job description on this, and it's something we plan to share with the board at the upcoming workshop and talk a little bit about. We, we have started to talk with other districts, and there's a wide variety of what these positions look like in terms of structure and compensation, quite frankly. So we're trying to do some benchmarking against other districts, but it's something from a budget standpoint that we wanted to make sure we talked about. At, at the district level, you will see in a moment that there were some pretty significant savings realized in the transitions of Burke Leclair and, and Aaron Murray. While we expanded the roles of existing personnel by doing a shared service model with Amy Merriweather as our Director of Finance, there has been pretty significant budget savings realized. And I'm, I know that's something that the Board of Finance will appreciate. An area that I'm paying a lot of attention to because due to COVID-related expenses, it's a line item that is living above its normal means. We hired three additional full-time custodians for this year, given the demands of disinfecting and cleaning in our schools. And that, those are positions that were hired as one-year positions. We are not planning to bring those back next year unless we need to. And in addition to that, our custodial crews have had to put in more significant overtime than they have in the past, offset somewhat by the fact that we've had fewer events at the schools that used to require overtime. But it's still an increase and one that is not sustainable long-term in terms of without, without a significant budget increase. And then I want to summarize here by really showing where we're trying to target staff savings. And it's on that non-certified side. Quite frankly, it's a personnel area that has trended upwards in the last six or seven years. Compared to 12, 12, 13, when we had 4,500 students, we actually have 10 additional non-certified staff. As much as we've come down on the certified side, we've gone up in non-certified. And while certified positions are more expensive than non-certified, it's really the area that I think we need to look at more closely to try to realize any budget savings. There will be a little bit of savings. We, we added, again, temporary positions, temporary hours actually for general education. That won't be big dollars of savings, but that's something I'm, I'm talking about. But this is looking at across our secretaries, certainly our special education pair professionals, our custodians, everybody who's non-certified. To say if we have staff movement and staff retirements, are those positions that we're going to replace? Or are they things that we need to take a strategic look at? And as a target for this budget, we are going to go into the spring saying we're targeting a reduction of five FTE across all non-certified groups without trying to specify that right now.
And Neil, just frame a reference on that. Neil, what, what's like the total number FD in the category? Two 50, something like that?
Yeah, about two, two, it's right around there. We have it at the start of the presentation, 255.
Okay. All right.
So reducing five should be an achievable goal based on, we have retirements and movement in those areas. And just taking a hard look every time there is a vacancy, some you'll have to fill, but some we may be able to be strategic about. So to summarize and then take any additional questions, I have a narrative slide and then a dollar slide. So to put this in thematic terms, the first theme would be where are we with enrollment needs? And the theme is that we're really striving for flat certified staffing. That goal of 102 classroom positions at the elementary level is a budget-to-budget number that compares favorably. HJMS flat staffing, other than that tiny increase we put in last year, and at Simsbury High School, supporting our new elective courses, but not adding staffing. What, what is the board's enhancement? What kind of new programming are we getting out of this? At the elementary, it's, it's that rebuild of a really historically strong support intervention system. Henry James, we've talked about that PE and health enhancement at Simsbury High School, both the course offerings, but also the summer programming. I'm, I'm going to really continue to talk to you about that over time and, and what we might need there. And then of course, the board's request to be able to have a conversation about a dedicated position for equity and inclusion. On the reduction side, you can hear me loud and clear that it's not going to come from enrollment anymore. You know, the, the well is dry in terms of looking at meaningful enrollment related reductions on the certified side. And that's why you see the target on the non-certified side that I spoke about just a few minutes ago. We are trying to meet some of the principal requests through repurposing of existing staffing. Some of that math tutorial, we may look at a different way for our math coaches to deliver some direct services related to math intervention. And certainly, the one place where we did realize significant savings is the central office restructuring. So to show you the dollars and have the finish here at the slide that you've been used to seeing over time, this is a roll forward and then say, if we roll forward and then talk about what would be additions to current budget and what would be reductions. Everything at the top is additions. The board is used to these being impacts of contract negotiations. So it starts at the top with the impact of teacher negotiations at about $1.3 million, in which overall would represent a 1.8% increase. So that's the format of this slide that I know this board is very used to. When I say impact of administrative contracts, the second line, you see that reflected as a savings. And the reason why I'm not saying negotiated contracts there is because those are the savings from the restructuring. There is, there is some minor dollars in the negotiated contracts, but it's, it, it's an overall savings. And the other units that bargaining units, SFEP, nurses, you're going to see a small negative right now. That's some minor Medicaid savings. The nurses actually are up for negotiations this spring. So any dollars that are added to their salaries would be accounted for in that reserve of unsettled contracts. And then NAGE is our custodial union and their contract. The other things you see in there that Amy, in creating this slide, has the social security Medicare costs. Right now, employee insurance, we're budgeting for a 7% increase. I think there's some hope that that number might move in a favorable direction. Like if that number could move to 5% and, and not have as much of an impact that is it is now at over $725,000, that would certainly be helpful in moving the needle. And then pension and other post-employment benefits is the other line that you see there. In terms of reductions, we always have a placeholder for planned retirements. And the savings that we might realize from a person retiring at the top end of the scale to a mid-level higher, we usually, we earmark about a $25,000 savings. So times six, that would be in the neighborhood of $150,000. And those non-certified staff reductions, if we were able to achieve five, would be approximately $300,000 in operating savings. So all told, the additions would account for 3.13% increase, but the reductions offset that by 0.62. And you can see that where we are tonight, with the goal, the, the guidance that has been set by the Board of Finance, just in personnel costs, we're talking about 2.5% right now. I will note that this does not include dollars yet for a Director of Equity and Access. So if that's a position that the board wants to move on, we will have to account for that in the additions that are. So save the dollars to the end. I think we can leave that slide up while we see if there are any more questions.
And Neil, I would thank you very much, Neil. That was great. I would just jump in with, with one comment. And as Neil said, talking about personnel at 2.5, if you just look at the value of the teacher's contract in and of itself, which is our largest driver on an annual basis, you're at a 1.8. So the reality of our ability over past years for those board members that have been with us and, you know, our average budget increase over a five-year period of 1.6 or whatever it's been, largely attributable to the fact that, as Neil has shown, we could capture FTE. He's clearly stated, and you can see in the numbers here, and I know I'm doubling down on it a little bit, it's just, it's not there from an enrollment standpoint to take an FTE at a time on the certified side for substantive reductions. So you try to be innovative and look at different things. But I think this, as we head into the workshop, does a nice job of showing where we are from a baseline. You know, we came out early and said our fixed costs are at about three. After everybody's taken a look and Amy's been involved, that's, you know, that's about where we're at, you know. I think we have some creative ideas to lower the number a little bit, but it'll, it'll be a tough situation if at the end of the day, that 1.5 doesn't have a little bit of flexibility.
Neil, I have a question on the, going back to, you were saying that we're not going to keep the custodians that we've hired, but you know, assuming that we by next, you know, by the end of the summer, everyone's vaccine, you know, vaccinated and everything is, you know, prayerfully okay, the protocol will still need to be maintained, the cleaning protocol. So will our current custodial staff be able to do that?
I mean, right now, what our floating custodians, that we call them, are, they're really largely accounting for backfilling any staff absences that we have. And so right now, it's very hard to hire substitute custodians, quite frankly. Our hope would be to be able to establish a pool of substitute custodians that we used to have and kind of move forward in the same direction historically. We have, through the purchase of disinfected sort of spray guns and equipment, we're pretty efficient with the protocols. And, you know, our, our custodians, I, I, our head custodians are very confident that they're doing the job to keep it clean. I mean, you know, we have a formula around square footage and proper staffing for custodians. And the goal would be to go back to, you know, some sort of that ratio that we've used over time.
So, so yes, we would be able to maintain the current cleaning protocol and we should be fine.
I, I believe so.
Yeah. Okay.
Quick question, Neil or Matt. So current guidance of 2.51 increase, you said, you said, Matt, the recommendation was 1.5 or something, or the 1.5 number?
Yeah, at, at the Board of Finance, three board meeting, we had some conversation. We presented our fixed costs and they gave a target for both boards of, of a 1.5% increase. So that's the number I'm, I'm referencing, Brian.
In, in dollars, that's a million bucks, basically, per take? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty, I mean, maybe I'm way off base here, but it's pretty close to me. Okay. Like meaning this number, 2.5 to 1.5, I, I mean, okay.
Hey, Neil, we may not know this yet, since students aren't, haven't enrolled for classes for next year quite yet. But so we, we're talking about the additional class, classes at the high school. Is there any efficiencies to be made? Right? If you're going to add classes, that may mean that the market is moving away, right, from other classes? And is there any, is there anyone that may, that may have low enrollment that we, you know, you know, maybe can realize some efficiencies from?
So that's an exercise that plays out in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's what I, sorry. Yeah, I thought I was a little premature on it.
Yeah, so students, students choose their courses in the next couple of weeks. And historically, we've seen departments have ups and downs, but also within departments, we have courses that see ups and downs. And that's, you know, at the high school, given the size of the departments, even though they're smaller than they used to be, you're still dealing usually with about 70 overall teaching sections for a full department. And being able to parcel those out to keep class sizes properly sized, but also account for adjustments that need to be made, it's, I mean, it's an exercise that takes skill, but we've been able to manage it pretty well. Again, I, I know Ken Para, the Assistant Principal, works with the department supervisors and myself. I, I'm very confident that we can achieve it with flat staffing.
Neil, I'm just wondering, as we revisit all of this through our workshop on the sixth, could you maybe give us a number for, or a range for Director of Equity position, what that might look like?
Yeah.
All right.
So I, I'm working with a couple of other personnel directors on that right now. So I, I'm working with a couple of other personnel directors on that right now. Um, uh, some who just added positions and some that have had them for the last few years. But, um, it is a wide variety. So I, I will, uh, be able to have some information ready for you at the workshop.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right. Well done, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. That was great.
Okay, so next up is, uh, the six-year capital improvement plan.
Yes, thanks, Susan. And I'm just going to speak to the, um, oh, there is a slide, okay. The, the one, one-page slide here. Um, really what I wanted to reference is the conversation I think we should, we should have at the workshop. So we've prioritized the year one projects, um, thinned them out a little bit over our conversation and overtime to focus on the district security improvements and get kind of that placeholder, um, every couple of years. We're well, we've talked about the Bleacher project now for, for several years. And then as you go down, what we have is, uh, what was the net result of our conversation of the first option for our long-term facilities planning? So that is what our year one looks like at this point. At the workshop, what Jason and Amy have done a great job creating is that six-year outlay, um, which will have the maintenance priorities. And Jason will take some time on years two through six and just walk us through the categories. There's nothing super exciting there, you know, it's roofs, it's plumbing, it's doors, it's windows. But we do have to approve the six-year outlay and I just want to take some time at that workshop to get people's eyes on it. I also think we should have a conversation at that workshop and wanted to kind of put it out there tonight. Um, to talk about decoupling these projects, um, and potentially having Latimer Lane as the number one priority. Um, still in the mix a little bit in the closeout of our project at Henry James School. Um, I think to turn the focus solely, uh, to Latimer as the highest need elementary school that we've talked about, um, throughout the whole process, uh, would help to streamline this a little bit. It would help to reduce the cost significantly, uh, in the short term. Uh, and in my hope, the likelihood that we have success. So that's something I would at least want to have the conversation about with board members. And several of us have, have had some of those conversations, uh, along the way. And Amy can work with us on the modeling right there in terms of the debt service line and give us kind of the, uh, how that quantifies and, and plays out. Um, I did have what I thought were some real good conversations with Maria, the town manager today, uh, on some of the ideas Susan, you brought to me about, uh, touring the building, um, with, with, uh, both Board of Finance members and with Board of Selectment members. I think it's going to be really important that we work collectively and closely on this plan with the selectmen. Because the selectmen approved the plan that goes to the Board of Finance for consideration. So to be able to talk a little more thoroughly to the Board of Selectmen about what our process was, what our priorities are and what the need was, I think will, will help everybody to really understand, um, where the Board of Education stands in this, this long-term study. Um, they're also talking about on the Board of Selectmen's side, kind of splitting out how they've done their workshop and doing their operating on one day and maybe just their capital in another meeting where we could, uh, go and talk to them a little more specifically about our project in the vision, vision behind it and answer any questions that they have. I, I like both those ideas, uh, so I put those out to, to board members tonight to know that those conversations are, are going on. And I think, you know, I wasn't able to participate in the recent Board of Finance meeting, but, you know, the takeaway from many was that this is, uh, got to be a collaborative effort between the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen, uh, on priorities to present to the Board of Finance. And I feel, you know, we've had a great working relationship for years and years that we can be successful in, in doing that.
I agree. I think, um, you know, the Board of Finance has stated that they don't have public audience because they vet the public comment through the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen. And I think the best way for us to, uh, have everybody understand and feel the public comment is being heard on all sides is to make sure that we are upfront and, um, in person with the Board of Selectmen as much as we would be with the Board of Finance.
So those are just my thoughts and obviously we have the forum of the workshop to, uh, respond to any questions and talk a little bit about process and, and, and conversations and, and where we want to go from here. But wanted to put in front of you again what year look, year one looks like currently, because that's always the most pertinent part of the conversation.
So Matt and Susan, I just wanted to point out that this slide is a little confusing because it actually doesn't have the Latimer project listed. You see how the Latimer project is missing there?
Oh, I don't know what that.
I just saw that. That's why I went off of mute. I was gonna, thank you, Neil.
It should, I apologize. It should be on the line right above the Henry James.
Thank you.
Right away.
The total.
I was like, where is it? Maybe it was just me.
It's in your paper copy in your packets if you look at that. Sorry about that.
That's what I was looking at. So I wasn't even looking at the screen. So I don't, I don't know what happened on the translation there, but yes, the Latimer Lane renovation is 34 million. Um, Henry James addition, 31 million for the correct total that's up there, 66 million. So good catch on this slide. Uh, the exhibit is correct. So thank you, Neil, for, and others for pointing that out.
Yep.
All right. Other discussion around that? And we'll move forward with the audit report.
All right, we're going to kick these last two items on the agenda over to Amy.
Good evening. So I will take you through the audit report first. So we'll go through where we've been and then we'll get an update on where we stand. Exhibit 10 in your packet, I'll just take you through, um, that little two-page summary quick. So if you go down to, um, right where that first chart is, um, you'll see the final budget compared to actual.
Can you put up the chart? Can she put up the chart?
I think we lost Katie's presentation.
I don't know that we had this exhibit up because she was going to talk through the hard copy at the, uh, at the meeting. I'm not sure we have the order. You have the exhibit in your packet.
Uh, so if you want, if you give me like a minute, I can put it on a drive and put it on my computer if Katie, she can let me screen share.
Which, um, I have it up. Which, which exhibit number is it?
I can't, we can't screen share with our Zoom subscription.
Kind of go on the hard copy, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully you all have it on your, it was all in your packets, exhibit 10.
It's all there. Find it. You're good? Okay. All right. So that, that first chart that's there where it says, um, revenues and expenditures, the surplus, the deficit. So you have your final budget, you have your actual, and then you have your variance. So this little section here is all on a budgetary basis. And you can see that our revenues exceeded our budget by about 1.2 million dollars. And, um, the reasons on this related to the Board of Education, um, was the ECS grant was, um, we received an additional 65,000 compared to budget. Um, our investment income was in excess of about $250,000. And then we had some, um, of the non-public schools, we, we had some additional revenue there as well, total of about $52,000. Um, the items relate to the town side, we had some additional, um, building department fees. And then the majority relates to our increase in, um, property taxes over what was budgeted. So as you might be familiar with during the budget process, the Board of Finance always budgets at a collection rate of 98.5%, but we typically collect at 99.5%. So that relates, that translates to about $600,000 in excess, um, revenues there. Moving down to the expenditures, the variance of $298,000. The majority of this is actually related to the Board of Education. $266,308, um, is the savings that the school retained for the closing of the schools in March due to COVID. Uh, moving down to the next line where it has excess of revenues over expenditures. So like above, I said, we were on a budgetary basis and now we're on a GAAP basis. So why do we care about the GAAP basis? Because that's what the rating agencies care about. So in particular, going forward with, um, you know, this Latimer project and getting it on the referendum, this is what they're going to review to make their call as to, um, how much interest we're going to pay. Um, so excess revenues, uh, actually you can see that number there is about 5 million. If you go down to the fund balance, you'll see that we started about 17 million at the beginning of the year and we ended at almost 19 at the end of the year. Um, there is a little section, it starts with non-spendable committed, assigned, and then portion of general fund balance at June 30th. Um, so that 1.1 number is made up of the non-spendable, which is basically some prepaid expenditures. And then what I wanted to draw your attention to is the committed, um, balance of the 651,000. So that's your non-lapsing account of the $385,000 plus your year-end savings of the 266,308. And then the next line down, you have your unassigned general fund fund balance, um, at that 17.7 million. And this is about 17% of operating expenditures. The reason that I bring this up is because most AAA bond rated, um, communities are about 15.5% and we're at 17%. So we're definitely in a good position, um, to be in.
Amy, what's their policy number on that? I mean, it's within that range, isn't it like 12 to 14 or something that they want your target?
They actually just changed it. So their target now is anywhere from 15 to 17%.
Okay.
After the year end, we actually took $2 million out of it and transferred it to a capital reserve. So right now we're about 16%.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, moving on to the next page, um, you have just a, a brief summary of the capital for the town and the board. Um, but what I wanted to draw your attention to or highlight is the, um, management comments. So the accounting procedures manual, this was one that was in there last year. This is something that's going to be completed upon our, um, completion with our transition to the MUNUS accounting system. Unfortunately, it had been delayed because of COVID and then our trainer got COVID and they got hacked. And it's just been, you know, one thing after another. So we're actually scheduled to go live with their financial piece in March. Um, and then the HR and the payroll piece will be, um, shortly after that. So with any luck, this will be either the last year or the second to last year with this comment. So it's definitely in progress. And the reason that I tell you about the lag with the MUNUS is it relates to the fraud risk assessment below. So this is a standard comment from the auditors, what they suggest an outside, um, firm coming in to take a look at what, um, your, your risk is for, um, any possible fraud. So this is something that we had on the capital plan to, um, do in fiscal year '22. Um, due to staff capacity, it's highly unlikely it'll get done in '22 because we'll still be doing the MUNUS conversion. So likely this will be pushed out to fiscal year '23. And then the last thing I wanted to remind you of related to the audit is last year we had a federal grant binding, um, because we did not have proper documentation in our policies related to their procurement procedures. Um, you will see that's not listed in here, so that has been rectified. We are completely in compliance with all of our state and federal grant requirements. Any questions on that? Well, that's where we've been. And now I will show you where we're going. So that's going to be exhibit 11. Um, so on the revenue side, not much has changed here. Um, the only thing I wanted to highlight is our special education excess cost grant. We received some incredibly good news that we are getting an increase of almost $283,000. Um, if you recall at the last quarterly, um, we were actually anticipating a deficit in the special education out of district students. And because of this money, um, and a couple of other IDA grant offsets, we actually are not looking at that deficit any longer. So that's some great news there. Um, nothing else has really changed. If you go to the next page, you'll see the coronavirus relief funds. This is something that was added to your quarterly report from the last time you received it. This just gives you the total of what we've received to date, that $476,000. Um, and Matt stole my thunder by giving you the good news already that we are anticipating another allocation coming soon. Um, so they should be letting us know, um, pretty soon what our actual allocation is. And then we should be receiving the money by April. Moving down to the expenditures, um, I noticed when I was reviewing tonight, there was one sentence missing from this that I had, or I thought I had added under the chart. So as you can see, um, our spent percent spent to date is 48% um, for this year compared to about 45% for last year. Um, so what that note was supposed to highlight is that, um, the current year reflects 10 payrolls for this period, whereas the prior year reflects nine payrolls for that period. So that's the majority of the increase. And then the, um, the explanations within each of those line items is in addition to the payroll. I just didn't want to write payroll increase in every single line. But then by doing that, I omitted it completely. So apparently that wasn't a good idea. Um, so just to highlight a couple of things, through the general control section, um, you'll see that we're up slightly a little bit right now. But as Neil pointed out earlier in his presentation, um, we are going to see some significant savings with Erin and Burke and the central office transition. So I'll expect that to go down as we start to realize those savings in the coming months. Um, under the instruction, this mainly relates to, um, you know, the, the hiring of the additional five teachers. We also had some additional licenses for tech. We had some special education overtime, um, additional use of substitutes, things of that nature. Under the health services, again, there's a, about a 5% increase here in addition to the payroll. This is the five, this is the, um, PP&amp;E that was purchased at the beginning of the year. And then the staff time to set up all of our new protocols due to, um, the pandemic. Um, under pupil transportation, another large increase here. Um, so this mainly related to us renegotiating our contract with Salters. We gave them a large front to support, um, during the summer months. Um, and we anticipate that we will have athletics transportation savings, um, as we move through the year to offset this, um, these additional expenditures. So that should start to come down as the year goes on as well. And then finally, the operation of plant, this is, um, the last thing where it was, um, slightly higher than we had anticipated. And this again is just related to the increased staff time, the cleaning supplies, the sanitizers, um, things of that nature to get school going. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to touch base with you about is we had, um, we have been recording our COVID expenditures throughout. Um, and then as we're reviewing some of the, um, GL detail, um, in preparation for this meeting and doing our quarterly review, there are some things that we've been able to identify that are COVID-related, but they're not directly COVID-related. So we had some additional like tech licensing where, you know, everybody went hybrid. So we needed more licenses, even though we pay for those licenses anyways. We've had additional subs for teachers that have gone out either to care for somebody that has COVID or is a close contact themselves. Um, we've had, um, the custodians where we hired the floaters. We thought this would reduce some of our overtime, as Neil mentioned, not the case. We still have, um, some custodial overtime. And then we also have some additional staff expenditures for overtime tutors, things of that nature for students that are struggling. So with that said, we are seeing an uptick in our expenditures at this point in the year. So what we're going to do is put, um, a freeze on our budget. And this doesn't mean that we're cutting all of our spending. We still have to operate. We still have to support our students. We're just going to make a little bit of effort, effort to work with the principals on what they need. Um, and try to spend those dollars a little more wisely. Um, we're going to review this over the course probably through the end of March, just to make sure that we're okay with our bottom line. Um, and then we'll review again to make sure that we are good to go through the end of the rest of the year. And any other purchases where they didn't feel that they were getting something maybe they wanted to do, um, for a specific purpose, they'll be able to make those purchases then. Um, any questions on that? I think Matt had, I talked to Matt earlier and I guess, um, he's talked with some of his colleagues. And actually there's, um, some other districts that are actually taking a similar approach. Um, he could speak to that.
Yeah, I, I think it's just precautionary, you know, I think at the beginning of the year, at the onset, the, so focused on getting everything up and running with all the new protocols and expenses that, you know, take a little bit of pause here, uh, with some of the accounts that where we haven't spent money at, at times in the year where we usually already have, um, in comeback in March, as Amy said. And this is pretty consistent practice with, with my colleagues. They are getting ready to develop budgets for next year and really taking a hard look, uh, at what projections right now look like year round.
Any questions on that? Okay, thanks, Amy. It's great to see it all laid out and appreciate the hard work on that. Um, so now we are back to public audience and I have not received any comments. Um, so now we are back to public audience and I have not received any comments. So um we'll move forward and um our next meeting is Tuesday, February ninth. Um, that's our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, we do have our workshop just a reminder and uh you'll get that information. But on the ninth is our next board meeting. And at this point, we're not quite sure where it's going to be held. They're still working on getting the library um up and running for us to hold our meetings there. So we will um have that information come to us with our packets, if not before. Um, all right, I will take a motion to adjourn. No one wants to move?
No adjourn.
All right, so we got our first in a second. All right. Thank you all, um and we'll talk to you soon. We're supposed to vote, right? We're voting on the motion to adjourn, sorry. Forget that one. All right, have a good night, everybody. Thank you.